Good evening, everyone. This is Monday, May 15th, 2023, 7:00 PM. Here at the City Council Chambers at City Hall officially call the meeting to order and entertain roll call.
Go for it. Here Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkhouse.
Here.
Myers.
Here Kengis.
Present.
Rothie.
Here Schneider.
Here.
We are all here. We'll move forward with Section C, Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Moving to Section D, approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Council discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Section E, approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the minutes from April 24th, 2023 study session and the regular meeting on May 1st, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Drinkhouse. Council discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Section F is our guest council person. This month we have Mr. Shay Doyle, or at least this week, Mr. Shay Doyle from the Waverly Sherlock Senior High School Excel Club.
Yes.
So, the invitation of Dr. Rothie, I believe?
Yeah, I'm in the exchange club and so I reached out to Mrs. Burrows, who's their faculty advisor, and we've got some students lined up and Shay was able to come tonight. So, it's great.
Excellent. Do you have anything you'd like to share about yourself briefly?
Nothing really. I'm a senior at Waverly Sherlock High School, 18 years old, and that's about it.
Okay. So, we were going to talk about this at the end of the meeting, but if you were to come back for our study session, then you wouldn't be in high school anymore.
Yeah, it is. It's weird.
Point of order, just saying. So, and you'd have to go back to the drawing board.
Right.
Well, welcome and it's a pleasure to have you with us. Move into Section G, the community highlight, recognition of the Whartburg Clay College Clay Target Sports Team 2023 National Championship win in the classic All-American Schools for Division II. Do I have anybody that's joined us from the sporting way? I don't see anybody rising either. I think this is a great thing. I know that there's some other schools around the state that their program is coming to an end with funding and those types of things, which is unfortunate. I'm a big proponent of, you know, youth, even through college, people picking up a sport or a skill that they can do throughout their life. Not everybody can play football forever. So, golf, shooting sports, pickleball is, you know, so transitioning from tennis to other versions of that. All those long life skills, bowling is another one. So, having a collegiate championship win is also something to be proud of. So, wanted just to point out their recognition. Which will move us into Section H, the public hearing, unless somebody has anything they would like to add to that.
I suppose I would note, would say it's a fairly new sport at Whartburg, so it's really impressive that they've managed to get the national championship so soon after establishing the program.
Absolutely. All right. Section H, public hearing. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing directing the sale of $4.5 million, subject to adjustment per terms of the offering, general obligation bonds, Series 2023. The mayor and council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed and the following action will be considered. Have we received any written or oral comments, Carla?
I have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any public comments from anyone that has joined us this evening? Seeing nobody rise, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-76, a resolution directing sale of $4.5 million, subject to adjustment per terms of offering, general obligation bonds, Series 2023.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Council, staff, and guest discussion. Maggie Berger has from Spear Financial.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Maggie with Spear Financial. We did have, we received bids this morning. Five bids were received for the sale of $4,500,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2023. We are recommending that you would award this evening to Roberts W. Baird &amp; Company out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, at a true interest rate of 3.1136%. And they are going to pay a premium, so the purchase price is $4,737,924.15, meaning you're going to get a $237,000 premium. As part of this, as part of this bond sale, we did go to Moody's and did have the city do a credit rating, as you have done in the past. We're happy to report that the city has maintained its AA3 credit rating. So, I remind you, the AAA is the highest rating that you can get. Then it's a AA1, AA2, and AA3, and then it drops into the single A category. So, you are right at the bottom of that AA category. We do want to point out that you scorecard, from their scorecard methodologies, you do score out at a AA2. There are certain demographic items that keep you in that AA3 when they talk about you at committee. One of those items, I will say, and it is reported in the report, that although you do not have governance of your hospital, you do own the hospital as the city, it is a component unit. And so, that they do mention, and we will use the word that they use as a credit drag, because there could be inherent risk if something would drastically go wrong at the hospital. There could be asks of financial support on behalf of the city council. So, we do point that out, but otherwise liquidity looks good, your fund balances look good. There were some new methodologies, I know. You've discussed fund balances as part of your budget conversations. There are some new methodologies and it took a little broader approach to looking at your fund balances, which was fantastic for the city. And overall governance of the city is doing well, high regard for your administration, not only the administrator, but your finance director, and how they were performing on that call. They did an excellent job. But overall, just how they budget with you guys and take care of everything. They're doing monthly reports, things like that. So, we're real happy with this. They do have this ESG score, and I want to talk a little bit about that. So, ESG is environmental, social, and governance. So, you're scoring the highest you can in the governance. You're scoring the neutral to low on the social issue, just meaning that it's above average educational attainment, things like that. From the environmental, you score what's called an E3. E4 is the kind of most negative that they have. The E3 is just because of what sits right behind us, the water here. So, environmental, there's risk of flooding, although you've taken a lot of steps to mitigate things that could happen because most cities that sit on some sort of waterway are in that E3. So, that is no different than what we're seeing on any other city that sits along a body of water in the state of Iowa, just due to that flooding risk. So, with that, again, we were very, very happy. The second to the last page outlines all of the bidders that participated in today's bid. Robert Baird, as normal, has a large syndicate. I was explaining to the mayor prior to the meeting. That just means that Baird was the primary offering buyer, and then they will turn around and resell it, and they may sell to some of these folks on this list. They may turn around and resell these bonds to individual portfolios. They may sell them to other brokerage houses that may put them in individual portfolios. Everybody, the first four bids were all 4% interest rates. That's very common, but the yields on those interest rates are somewhere probably in the low threes to mid-three range. That's why they have to give you premium dollars. So, that's why they have to give you money ahead, which is good for you. Piper Sandler, we think they wanted to submit a bid. They submitted a bid. They were at 5%. They were the high bid, and last week they were the low bid on a deal that we had. So, every day the market is changing, and that's really just because there's a lot of uncertainty. But we're very happy with that. The final page is the final debt service schedule, and these bonds are callable after June 1st of 2030. So, when we hit that June 1st, 2030, if interest rates are lower, you would have the option to call those bonds in at that time and refinance them, pay them off, pay them down, whatever you would like to do, and that call is only at your option. Just a little history for you. Last year, the city did not have a capital improvement borrowing. We'll say you just borrowed for a small item. So, we went back to 2021. UMB Bank was the low bidder at that time. Baird had UMB in their syndicate this time. There were six bidders that day, and the interest rate was a 1.00%. So, that is what the Federal Reserve has done to your municipal interest rates over the last 12 to 15 months. But with Federal Reserve rates going up 4.5% and you going from a 1 to a 3.11%, we're pretty happy with that. That's a pretty good result. 3.11 is actually probably a little bit lower than we even saw a couple of weeks ago. So, for the same kind of maturity schedule. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Maggie, could you give a non-accountant answer or clarification on the AAA versus the AA2?
Yes.
And the distinction there?
Oh, oh, so AAA is the highest in the land. Demographically, it might not be possible for your city to get to a AAA. There are only about 13 AAAs in the entire state of Iowa, one being the state of Iowa as a borrower. Then there is the AA1, the AA2. So, from that standpoint, there is a scorecard. So, all of your audited financials and census information is entered into a scorecard, and that scorecard calculates a number, and that number is a AA2. Then, the analysts that your administration spoke to, they go into a committee meeting. You are already at the AA3 range. It is hard to get an upgrade, and you were at the AA3 range. So, the committee talks about what are things that you don't score as well on, what are things that you score highly on, what puts you in a AAA, what puts you into that AA3 category. And so, committee came out withholding your rating at the AA3 instead of upgrading you to a AA2. I will tell you, it is difficult, especially in a rising interest rate market. We're just not seeing a lot of upgrades from that standpoint. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but there's a scorecard that gets just spit out from the computer, and then there's a physical conversation amongst analysts that make up a committee, and then they discuss what is good and bad. I will tell you what I like about you scoring out higher than what the committee is giving you, is that that means you're firmly in that AA category, that you're not teetering on the edge of dropping into the single A category. Because if you scored out at a AA3, you know, there could be some conversation to say, well, what if, you know, if you had a material decline in this, would that drop you into that single A category? And believe me, you're getting more bidders and you're getting better interest rates in the AA category than you would with the single A category.
Thank you.
Our last bond sold, we rated and were carded at AA3. So, we've actually improved since 2021.
Correct. Yes. The scorecard was AA3 two years ago on the 2001 bonds, and so this one you did, went up. Now, there was some change in the methodology. And so, again, that added some goodwill, we'll say, to fund balances. They were taking a more narrow approach in the past as to cash that you had and what could be used as viable cash. And I want to say viable in the fact that if you had to use it in an emergency, that you were going to get it back, like let's say from FEMA or from some other program, was there cash there to be used? There was some cash that they were never counting in the past, and they've started to include that, and that has given you a little bit of a boost as well, as some of the improvement on your demographics.
Yes, I was wondering, you have, you've had these different ratings, such as AAA and AA. I'm familiar with that, but you said there's 13 other cities in Iowa that have AAA rating. What exactly do they have that we don't? Is it basically kind of a better ability to tax their citizens, or what do we not have?
Yeah, a little bit of all of that. So, demographic wise, most AAA cities are sitting with a resident wealth income of more than about 110% to 125% of the national residential income number. So, you look at closest to here that has a AAA is Cedar Falls. Iowa City has a AAA as well, so you maybe put that into perspective there. Also, it looks at cash balances. So, you are sitting firmly at about a 60% cash balance. Those two cities and others in the AAA category are probably sitting at 100% to 110% cash balance. So, then there's this common, you know, question, well, are we sitting on too much cash rate? That's what your citizens are going to ask. So, there can be a little bit of a conundrum in that conversation piece. And then also, in us also looking at things like debt, and it's looking at pensions and liabilities. The smaller the city that you are, obviously that is a larger burden on you. You know, your percentage of debt versus the valuation of your city is going to be higher if you are a smaller city. So, if you have the same amount of debt as the city of Cedar Falls or the city of Iowa City, you are going to be, you're going to have a little bit more negative because of the size of your valuation of your overall city. Those are just a few of the items. Yeah, good question.
How long have we had the AA3 rating? Has that been pretty stable?
The AA3 rating was here before we started with you guys, which has been, I don't know, eight, seven years. And I think that you were firmly in that category for about three or four years before that. There was a time that you were in the single A category, and it did come up.
At one time, we really had a AA2. When Moody's went through the whole restructuring, when you had the short sale and all that happening nationwide, from CDC, they were bumped down to a AA3 like Cedar Rapids. A lot of them lost that third, and that's where you hit the AA3. Before I got here, we've stayed since. We'll be back to a AA2.
Right.
Before I leave, we'll have a AA2.
You heard it right there.
Now we know how to keep James around.
We'll have a AA2.
I do also want to point out, we did not have your local option sales tax revenue bonds that we did earlier in the year. We did not have those rated. Size wise, it really was not effective for you to have them rating at the time. I will tell you, had you had them rated, they would firmly be at the bottom of the single A category, as we're realizing with some other sales tax revenue debt that's being sold. And I say that because all revenue debt sold publicly competitively like this, you know, we're not talking about the SRF, but all revenue debt is going to always come in lower on the rating scale than your general obligation. General obligation has a full faith and credit of you backing it. The revenue debt is only backed by the revenues of the system, and so there's definitely inherent risk there with the revenues of the system. And so, any revenue debt, even, you know, even the Iowa cities of the world, their revenue debt comes in at like a AA3, although they're a AAA, they're coming in, you know, two notches below for their, three notches below actually, for their revenue debt, so.
If we sold our water bonds, instead of doing a GO straight out, went to water bonds, revenue bond, it would be coming in at A1, possibly A2.
Yeah.
So, we were better off selling it at less interest rate, the AA3 through the GO, and then backfilling it with the water bonds.
Correct.
The question I had is looking at the ESG considerations under environmental, and this statement just kind of caught my eye, the last sentence there. The city maintains neutral to low exposure to other environmental risks, including carbon transition, et cetera, et cetera. Carbon transition, I'm not exactly sure what that refers to, but there has been some discussion of a carbon pipeline being located a few miles north of Waverly. If that would happen, would that have an effect on our bond rate?
It's a good question. I don't know if I know the answer to that question right now. We'd have to go back to the analyst and ask if that is something that they're considering in other ESG, but they are strongly looking at the environment, and so absolutely, I think it would be a factor that they would want to discuss going forward if there was a carbon, you know, pipeline in the vicinity of yours community.
They could take it to an E4 rather than E3.
Right, right. Yeah, so it goes up to the E4 is your most negative, and like I said, the majority of cities that are sitting on a body of water in the state of Iowa are getting that E3. You're not going to get anything better than that, just because there is the idea that there could be, you know, rising waters, as we're having the rating for Eastern Iowa Community College sitting in Davenport, and the waters are rising, so.
I have just one more question, kind of a clarification thing. I was reading through this. What kind of GO funds is this? Is this a limited or an unlimited?
No, it's an unlimited. So, they refer to it as Unlimited Taxing Authority, GOULT, is what Moody's refers to it. And so, in the state of Iowa, your debt service levy in your budget is not limited to anything. It is only limited to the debt that you have outstanding, meaning that you can levy any amount to get you to pay back your debt. There's no bankruptcy filings in the state of Iowa, so if you were to say, we don't have enough money, I'm sure a judge would step in and go, oh, you're going to levy the property taxes. So, it gives it the general, it gives it the GO, Unlimited Taxing Authority, no limitations.
Cool. Yeah, I was just reading through it. I couldn't tell.
Yeah.
Anything further?
No, but when you're on a college, come see me.
Thank you very much, Maggie. Any final comments by council or our guests? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Vote is seven to zero. Resolution 23-76 is approved. Item two, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on fiscal year 2023 budget amendment. Mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be closed or declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Have we received any written or oral comments on this item?
We have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any public comments this evening? Seeing nobody rise, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-69, approving and amending the fiscal year 2023 budget.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Myers. Council discussion. Or staff?
Val, if you wanted to give a brief kind of overview of what we've got in front of us, I think it'd be helpful.
Basically, what you see in front of you, it's not increasing any of the taxes at all. A lot of the items, the majority of the items we found were items that we budgeted for like last fiscal year, but because of supply chain issues and everything, we haven't been able to get them in, so then we were purchasing them during this year. So, we're cleaning that up, and so that's where a lot of the budget amendments came out of, just to kind of get it coming out of the right fiscal year, coming out of the right funds. Let's see. Then also, some of the other amendments you'll see were like just increases in like utility costs, just on gas costs and stuff like that, simple ones like that. The other larger one was us taking on the golf course and us putting that in, so. You have any questions?
Anything from council?
Very good.
Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote is seven to zero. Resolution 23-69 is approved. Thank you, Val. Item three, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing in the second reading of ordinance 1126, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of portions of Waverly Medical Park that are currently zoned R4, including parcel ID 0911101026 and parcel ID 0911126007, from R4 multi-family residential transitional district to R2 one and two family residential district, and incorporating the zoning map of the city of Waverly, Iowa as a part of said ordinance. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed and the following action will be considered. Have we received any written or oral comments, Carla?
I have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any public comments from anyone this evening?
Kevin Fittrell, Waverly Medical Park LLC, just here for any questions. I do appreciate your consideration. We're very excited about the possibility of bringing single-family homes in that low to moderate price range into Waverly on the 40 lots, so any questions you'd have, I'm here to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments this evening? Seeing no one else rise, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the second reading of ordinance 1126, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of portions of Waverly Medical Park that are currently zoned R4, including parcel ID 0911101026 and parcel ID 0911126007, from R4 multiple-family residential transitional district to R2 one and two-family residential district, and incorporating the zoning map of the city of Waverly, Iowa as part of said ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Schneider. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Vote is seven to zero. The second reading of ordinance 1126 is approved, which brings us to item 3A. Approve to suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading of the immediately preceding ordinance 1126. Entertain a motion.
I would move approval to suspend the rules, move directly to the third and final reading of ordinance 1126.
Second.
Motion by Kengis, second by Rothie. Council discussion, if any.
This was a timing thing, that we wanted to get this done.
Yeah, the deadline for application is June 9th, and if it wasn't moved forward, June 5th would be the time it would be possibly approved, and to wait that long process, application paperwork, we felt if possible, with no objection from the public, the council, this would be a faster, easier route for Mr. Fittrell to be able to take.
Very good.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Voice vote.
Oh, voice vote, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Moves us to 3B. Thank you, sir. Third and final reading of ordinance 1126, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of portions of Waverly Medical Park that are currently zoned R4, including parcel ID 0911101026 and parcel ID 0911126007, from R4 multi-family residential transitional district to R2 one and two-family residential district, and incorporating the zoning map of the city of Waverly, Iowa as a part of said ordinance. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1126, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of portions of Waverly Medical Park that are currently zoned R4, including parcel ID 0911101026 and parcel ID 0911126007, from R4 multiple-family residence transitional district to R2 one and two-family residential district, and incorporating the zoning map of the city of Waverly, Iowa as part of the said ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Council discussion. Hearing none, roll call this time.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Vote is seven to zero. The third and final reading of ordinance 1126 is approved. Thank you for joining us this evening, too. Item C is Resolution 23-70, a resolution of support and commitment of local matching funds for workforce housing tax credit application for Waverly Medical Park LLC. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-70, a resolution of support and commitment of local matching funds for workforce housing tax credit application for Waverly Medical Park LLC.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Both for.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Both for.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote is seven to zero. Resolution 23-70 is approved. Brings us to public comment for items not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer, all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Are there any public comments this evening? Mr. Lampy.
Yeah, I missed the comment, public comments on the vote you just took. I needed, I was looking for some explanation and hoping that I would get it before you voted. This is for a tax credit for the developer, correct? Is what was just voted on and in favor. And it's for, strictly for the housing units? Is that correct? It's not for the infrastructure. This is not setting up a tax increment finance district for the city. But the city will be committing with the $5,000 per unit to do $200,000 worth of tax credits over the next three years, correct?
That's correct.
And those go to the developer to hold down the cost of the houses.
That's correct.
Is that correct? And the maximum price is set for 2,024 on those houses by the workforce development site is $298,021. Is that correct?
For single families.
Because I've already been asked about this, and I know you people will all get asked about it later, so. Just so everybody knows where we're going from, and that it is not a TIF district, it's strictly a tax increment or a tax credit for the developer for the building. And they won't receive it, the tax credit, unless the unit's finished.
They receive it when it's occupied.
What's that? When it's occupied.
Occupied.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll move forward with section J, the consent calendar. Item one is pay request from Cardinal Construction Incorporated for $66,333.74 for the Cedar River Park Phase III bid package one for dugouts and handrails. Item two is a pay request from Steggy Construction for $59,202.59 for the Cedar River Ball Diamonds bid package BP number two. Item three is a pay request from Steggy Construction Incorporated for $68,896.38 for the Waverly Parks Maintenance Office remodel. Item four is a pay request from WHKS and Company for $672.96 for the tail race wall removal. Item five is a pay request from WHKS and Company for $7,583.48 for the Waverly Bridge in Section 2023. Item six is a Class C alcohol license for GT Miller Time. Item seven is an extension of outdoor service for Class C for Tapatio Mexican Grill. Item eight is the cash dispersments for April 2023. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar, as read by the mayor.
Second.
motion by Bergen, second by Myers. Council discussion, if any. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section K, regular business. Item one is approving the third and final reading of ordinance 1123, an ordinance amending the municipal code of ordinances of Waverly, Iowa by repealing Chapter 74 Waterworks and replacing it with a new Chapter 74 Waterworks.
Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1123, an ordinance amending the municipal code of ordinances of Waverly, Iowa by repealing Chapter 74 Waterworks and replacing it with a new Chapter 74 Waterworks.
Second.
motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Both for.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Both for.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Both for.
Yes.
Vote is seven to zero. The third and final reading of ordinance 1124 is approved. Item three is approving the third and final reading of ordinance 1125, an ordinance amending the municipal code of ordinances of Waverly, Iowa by repealing Chapter 78 water and sewer connection fees and replacing it with a new Chapter 78 water and sewer connection fees. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1125, an ordinance amending municipal code of ordinance of Waverly, Iowa by replacing Chapter 78 water and sewer connection fees and repealing Chapter 78 water and sewer connection fees and replacing it with a new Chapter 78 water and sewer connection fees.
Second.
motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Both for.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote is seven to zero. Resolution, or the third and final reading of ordinance 1125 is approved. Item four is resolution 23-71, approving fiscal year 2324 community marketing recommendations from Ambridge Marketing for continuation of the community marketing plan. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 23-71, a resolution approving fiscal year 2324 community marketing recommendations from Ambridge Marketing for continuation of the community marketing plan for $6,795.
Second.
motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Council discussion and staff.
I didn't know if Connie wanted to say anything about this, or?
She sure can.
So just a little bit of background, the Waverly Welcome Home Community Marketing campaign was launched in October 2020. The campaign is designed to attract workforce residents and visitors to Waverly, and focuses on the job opportunities and quality of life offered in the community. We've worked with Ambridge Marketing from the beginning. They've helped us to build the brand and carry out the campaign. So you have before you tonight the recommendation and proposal from Ambridge for continuation of the community marketing plan for fiscal year 2324. In response to budget reductions for the upcoming fiscal year, the marketing plan has been significantly scaled back. The recommendations focus on maintaining the website presence and also optimizing the website for broader search visibility, and as they refer to SEO in the proposal. So in addition to that, our staff will continue to, with regular Facebook posts, but we're proposing to discontinue the paid digital marketing just in response to budget. Nick Harvey is here from Ambridge Marketing to briefly talk about the recommendations, and he can answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Nick Harvey, account manager, Ambridge Marketing fundraising. This year, we have four recommendations. Website hosting and SSL, that's just to keep the site on our server and keep the domain licensed. Website plugins are design elements to the site, so that's a yearly renewal to keep the website looking the same. And then we have monthly website maintenance. This is one hour of maintenance per month for our team to help with any issues that might arise, specifically content, photos, videos. If we want to change the focus, we can do that. This year, we scaled that back from last year from two hours to one hour, and we've added that those hours bank. So if there's an issue six months down the line and you've paid six months, we can use that to solve a bigger problem. And then the new item is the on-page SEO. So this is a long-term solution, that we will do keyword research and competitive analysis to drive your pages up, Google search, Bing search pages. So majority of users don't go past the first page. We want these pages to be on the first page of a Google search. So this analysis and rewriting of the pages will help do that. Any questions?
Yeah, it says, like, if you're maintaining it, why exactly does it cost $4,500? Like, does it cost a lot of money to maintain it and do that stuff?
That is, that is the charge for our staff to do the keyword research, competitive analysis, and then rewriting those pages, the backend work on the website, I guess.
Any other questions?
I seem to remember that the CTR, that's the click-through rate?
Yes.
That we're looking, I mean, when we have like 1% click-through rate, that's actually considered a very good click-through rate.
Yes, yes.
We also have the conversion rate, which is the number of times that people actually do something.
Yes.
I'm looking on your report on page four, and I'm trying to figure out why Ames has 119% conversion rate. How can you have a conversion rate that's over 100%? I'm sure there's something being computed here that I don't quite fully grok. So, so the Waverly Careers recruitment page, recruitment page four, you've got a list of cities. I suppose it's page 24 in my packet, but.
Ames. You're looking at 77 clicks, 10,410 impressions.
Yep. And the conversion rate's 119%.
That does not make sense. Sorry. Yes, that is likely an error.
Okay.
That does not make sense.
Okay. That number stood out to me as high.
Put that in there, just to make sure you're looking.
Anything else from Mr. Harvey? Continue the other discussion if need be. Thank you, sir, for joining us. Any other comments, questions, discussions?
I guess I would just make a comment that I was surprised what the city is paying for, for a year is about the same as what little old me with my tiny, teeny, tiny business pays, so I think it's a pretty good bargain.
I know, our business was just like $2,500 just for email services for a year. It's insane, so there needs to be a little more competition in that arena.
Anything else? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Both for.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Vote is seven to zero. Resolution 23-71 is approved. Brings us aside at five, resolution 23-72, accepting the citywide asphalt patching spring 2023 project as complete and approving the pay estimate number one. Entertain a motion.
Would move approving resolution 23-72, a resolution accepting the citywide asphalt patching spring 2023 project as complete and approve pay estimate number one in the amount of $17,580.51 as the final payment to Heartland Asphalt of Mason City, Iowa.
Second.
motion by Kengis, second by Rothie. Council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Both for.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Vote is seven to zero. Resolution 23-72 is approved. It's item six, resolution 23-73, setting the Elm Street and 29th Avenue Southwest-Southeast Water Main Loops Project bid letting for June 6, 2023, and setting the public hearing date for June 19, 2023, to review and approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 23-73, a resolution setting the Elm Street and 29th Avenue Southwest-Southeast Water Main Loops Project bid letting for June 6, 2023, and setting the public hearing date for June 19, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers at city hall, to review and approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost.
Second.
motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Council discussion.
I feel like I needed a little map of the water routes. So, Justin, could you explain what you mean by eliminating the dead-headed water line and improving service? Can you just give me an explanation?
Each of these areas are just areas that are a large dead end, so if there's any problems on some of these lines, that there's one feed into the area, especially, or Elm Street being one of them, that we've had issues out there in the past with the water leak where it affects the whole East Gate area. So this will give us a little redundancy in that area, so we can backfeed that area. 29th Avenue is going to be basically primarily for more flow for everything that's getting built down there. It'll add some redundancy from Augusta Lane across. We see some pressure fluctuations at times, and this should help alleviate some of that.
Thank you.
So I kind of understand the point of a loop, is so you can kind of shut down part of it and people can still get water access. I'm really curious, when you have a loop, which way does the water flow? Or does it always, does it flow in a consistent direction, or is it kind of changing directions?
That's a million-dollar question, but yeah, this, this one is primarily, it flows both ways, because the well is actually on the west side of town that primarily runs, and the tower's on the east side. So one would think it would kind of flow both ways as it's using water, as it's pumping water, so.
Okay.
It's bidirectional.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Both for.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote is seven to zero. Resolution 23-74, approving the purchase of a 2023 Gravely 672 zero-turn mower with bagger from Miller True Value from Waverly, Iowa. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 23-74, resolution approving purchase of a 2023 Gravely 672 zero-turn mower with bagger from Miller True Value of Waverly, Iowa at the amount of $16,000.
Second.
motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Council discussion.
Garrett, is that practical to bag the leaves and just the amount of space that we have? And I guess, what do we do now?
So last year was the first year that we tried it, because we had the zero turn with the bagger that we had for the Ball Diamonds. So we tried it over in Coleman and South Riverside, and it really helped a lot with all the leaves that blow into that fence there in Coleman and made it look a whole lot nicer.
Having to empty it every pass, probably a lot of work, but it's.
Right, it's not quite that bad, but yeah.
Okay. So we're basically paying $200 extra for a newer model and getting it sooner?
all the leaves that blow into that fence there in Coleman and made it look a whole lot nicer.
Having to empty it every pass, it's probably a lot of work, but it's...
Right. It's not quite that bad, but yeah.
So we're basically paying $200 extra for a newer model and getting it sooner.
Uh, it wouldn't necessarily be a newer model.
Well, wasn't it a different year?
No, they're the same year.
Okay.
Uh, the difference is 35 horsepower.
Okay.
From a 31 horsepower. And then we were also able to get it two months sooner. We were able to get it right after July 1.
So rather than having to wait until the end of the summer to get our lawnmower.
Correct.
Okay.
I wouldn't think four horsepower would make a difference, but when you run these on the hills, et cetera, it does make a big difference, actually, especially with the bagging capability that comes with it. So for the few hundred dollars extra, it was worth getting a slightly bigger engine.
All right, hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Bowford.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
A vote of seven to zero, resolution 23-74 is approved. Item eight, resolution 23-75, approving a contract and certificate of insurance for cemetery monument restoration for Mammon Monument Sales of Waverly, Iowa, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 23-75, a resolution approving a contract and certificate of insurance for cemetery monument restoration from Mammon Monument Sales of Waverly, Iowa, for an amount of $4,050, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Second.
Moved by Rothie, second by Bowford, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Bowford.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Bowford.
Yes.
A vote of seven to zero, resolution 23-77 is approved. Brings us to resolution 23-77, approving the purchase of grass seed from Wells Hollow Landscaping to plant in the five-acre borrow site used for the 2018 Airport Runway 29 Extension Project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 23-77, a resolution approving the purchase of grass seed from Wells Hollow Landscaping for $2,510 to plant in the five-acre borrow site used for the 2018 Airport Runway 29 Extension Project.
Second.
Moved by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion.
Just a little background on this, that particular five acre, excuse me, five-acre plot had been attempted to be row-cropped in the past, and it simply is too wet to be able to successfully row-crop it. So it's, we're going to seed it down, turn it into grass, we'll still get compensation out of it because we're going to sell the grass as, as feed. But that's why it's being seeded now, even though, you know, the project was finished a couple of years ago.
Is the intention to go back and crop it again?
Uh, I suppose at some point, if we have a multiple-year dry spell and the property dries out, I think, I think the issue is, is that it, it simply is too low, and the ground structure doesn't allow the water to seep away like it should. That is just going to be perennial, perennially too wet to be able to support row-cropping.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Bowford.
Yes.
A vote of seven to zero, resolution 23-77 is approved. Brings us to item 10, approval of the mayoral appointments. Seeking to approve the following mayoral appointment. Jackie Hansen is appointed to the Electric Utility Communications Board to fill a vacancy at the resignation of John Baber. Entertain a motion.
Move approval of the mayoral appointment.
Second.
Moved by Kengis, second by Bergen, council discussion if any. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section L is reports from boards and commissions. Item one, Leisure Services Commission minutes of February 16, 2023. Item two is the Bremer Waverly Law Enforcement Board minutes of April 10, 2023. Item three is the monthly financials of April 2023. Item four is planning and zoning commission minutes of April 20 of 2023. Item five is the Waverly Senior Center calendar of May 2023. All received into the record. Brings us to staff updates. Mr. Bronner.
We have a few to start, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I hope the first couple of Saturdays in May aren't an indication of how we're going to be all summer with a little rain here and there. But Art Walk was very successful, even though we got rained on pretty good during setup. The community still came out in force and still had a great day there. It ended up being a very nice day. We had the garden planting, uh, community garden planting this last Saturday. Again, got rained on, it was all good. There was actually about 25 volunteers. So we got everything planted fairly quick this year. But we will need volunteers for harvesting as we go on through the summer and into the fall. Also on Saturday was the Third Street Southeast Bridge plaque dedication. Very nice ceremony there at the south end of the bridge. If you haven't been down to see the plaque, be sure to stop down and see it. It turned out really nice. We had the grand opening for Cedar River Park. Nice ceremony there as well, good turnout. It's great seeing the youth out on the fields, and seems like they're pretty busy every night. So, so far, so good. And last thing is, is we've got water going into the pool, and it's holding most of it. So we're almost to summer.
Needs several more Saturdays to help with that cause.
I think it's all we have to do, sir.
All right. Brings us to city council comments. It's Myers.
I just wanted to say once again, kudos to everybody that helped make the Cedar River Park happen. It was a lovely grand opening last Monday night, and I think it's a huge asset to our community, and we're really thankful that we have that. And just real quickly, I was reminiscing with my family at dinner tonight. 55 years ago tonight, we were wandering in the wilderness up in Charles City after it blew away. And it has made me ever more appreciative of the wonderful emergency services that we have now compared to 55 years ago. And I have a great respect for bad weather and the warning systems that help us avoid it.
Thank you. Mr. Bergen.
Last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to attend a luncheon at LSI, the Lutheran Services of Iowa at Bremwood. I managed to get a nice tour of their campus. So it's, um, they do a great service for our community, and there's lots of, of at-risk youth who take advantage of the services they have there. I know that sometimes we pull our hair at some of the antics those kids get up to when they're working through their own personal issues, but I think it's an important service for us to, to offer to the, the larger community. So it was, it was good to be there and to see what they're doing. But so just, you know, a, a thank you for having them in our community and doing that good work. And if anyone would like to discuss a city business with me, I will be at the beach house afterwards. You can share a beer with me.
Do we have to share the same beer?
No.
I'm just asking. For, I'm asking, somebody wants to know, I'm sure. Mr. Schneider.
Nothing for me.
Okay. Mr. Drinkow.
Uh, yes, the state legislature finally adjourned a few weeks ago after passing a number of bills that I, as I understand it, affect or will affect the city's budget and our deliberations next year when we get to budget time. I don't understand any of it. I've tried to read through it and...
They didn't either, right?
I've looked at different sources, and I have no idea what's going on. I, I would, I'm, I'm not going to put Mr. Bronner on, on the spotlight tonight, but I'm, I'm hoping that maybe next week at our session, if you could just spend a few minutes and if you can, give us your opinion of how you think that this might affect Waverly's budgeting process going forward next year, and if there's anything there that we really need to be sufficiently concerned about, that, you know, we need to think about that going into the budget sessions. I know there was quite a bit of concern this year and uncertainty as, as to where we were going to be standing with the legislature with the new laws that were being passed.
No, I'd hope to do that tonight. We didn't receive any kind of summary of what had passed until about four or five days ago. So we're still digesting the calculations, the formulas. It, it didn't simplify anything. I will agree with that. It's messy.
Tax, when, when they title a, and this is, wasn't this one, but on, on the federal level, whenever they title a piece of legislation as tax simplification, you know they're lying.
It's not simplified.
Well, and, and if, if you're not able to put together a summary for next week, that's fine, too. But sometime before we get too far downstream here, I'd kind of like to know what we're looking at, and what kinds of things we can do, and what kinds of things we can't do. Which brings me to my second comment, and that is, while we are still finishing up the budgeting process, on the, our, our planning people had finished their presentation on doing our plans for parks and trails. I know at one time we talked about spending some time, maybe even an entire Saturday afternoon or something like that, but perhaps at least a study session in reviewing those recommendations and setting some priorities, because I know that everybody here on the council probably has their own ideas of what priorities should happen, what should be done first, and maybe what things we can leave for later. If that is not currently on the planning table to set up, I would like to at least throw that idea out there. I would be willing to spend some time, before we get too far into next year's budget, talking about what are the things we want to do now that we have a lot of the roads, a lot of the infrastructure things taken care of, and now we're looking at doing some of the, you know, some of the other quality of life kinds of issues. I think it's a good time to set back and make our list of projects again like we had with all of the infrastructure things that we had. So we checked off the infrastructure, we've got the Parkway done, you know, we've got 10th Avenue done, we got Fourth Street done, or 10th Street, Fourth Street, First Street. We've got all of those infrastructure projects. 20th, 20th Street Northwest, all of that stuff is done now. Highway, Highway, Business Highway 218. My gosh, we did a lot. But now it's time to take a look and make another list and say, okay, what are the projects that we want to go forward with, especially if we're going to be running into some tight budgeting issues. So it's my, my two cents worth for James and the mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rothie.
I won't be here next week to take James's blood pressure before and after he gives the legislative update. So we have two nurses in the group that can do that. But I'm going to second what Garrett said about planting at the garden. Ron almost had more volunteers than he knew how to corral. So especially, a special thank you to Boy Scout Troop 90, they were really helpful. And we also need help when it comes time to weeding, not just harvesting, Garrett. So Tuesday evenings, usually 5:30 or 6 until 8, and then Saturday mornings. Also want to thank all the people who donated to the Exchange Club for their golf tournament, which was last Saturday, they also got rained on. Did you work at that?
Yes, I got rained on.
Yeah, but they had, I think, over 100 golfers, and we easily met our base fundraising goal of $10,000 because we had so many businesses that donated, which was really great. So I think it was successful.
It was very successful.
Yeah, good. So that's it. Did you play?
It was very wet.
Yeah. Well, we heard the horn go off at the golf course, and that's why we needed to not stand out there at the garden, too.
So harvesting weeds, they can take those home if they want.
They can, sure.
The only thing you could take home.
Makes it a delay in wine.
If it comes on.
Ms. Bowford.
I have no comment, thank you.
Mr. Doyle.
I had a lot of fun here today. I'm interested in this sort of thing, and hoping to minor in political science in college. So, yeah, it's very interesting to kind of see what everything is going through, and I'd really like to come back.
Excellent.
Good.
Do you may ask if you have a, a college or university chosen?
Yeah, I'll be going to the University of St. Thomas in Minneapolis, St. Paul area.
Okay.
Really looking forward. I'll be doing mechanical engineering as my major, political science as my minor, and I'll also be doing Air Force ROTC up there.
Nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we know anyone else who graduated from that school?
Familiar with the school, yes. Yeah, it was a lot of fun. Appreciate you having me here.
Absolutely. Mr. Kengis.
I just was going to comment, we've, I think everybody got an email about parking in city lots. And I know when we did the parking lot area at the soccer fields, we looked at, I don't know if we passed an ordinance, or we looked at talking about enforcing what was allowed to be parked on city-owned parking lots and properties. So whether we need to go back and look at if there is ordinance, or what do we have on that, or how we look at enforcing that procedurally. Just to bring that up.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Brings me to, the only thing that I had, we missed it kind of on the staff comments, is the, the thought to unfortunately propose to cancel the May 22 study session for a lack of traditional agenda items. Oh, that's the way that I'm leaning towards, that we can carry that item forward. I know in, in my endeavors of seeing what legislative changes have been made, we're still digging through it, and I don't even know as if by next week you would have something valuable.
I think it'd be better to look at all the bills that were passed.
Correct.
Because more than just that last one's going to affect us. There's quite a few out there that maybe indirectly are going to affect us, so maybe we can give a little broader synopsis of what that is in a few weeks instead of one, and be able to come back with more than just that tax bill itself. So we'll research a little deeper if that works, and June 5, we'll have a whole lot more for you as to what we are, where we are, what it's going to do. So we're going to have to have a special session to cancel that session?
Hmm.
We're just going to...
We can cancel for a lack of agenda items.
Okay. Based on ordinance that we have those. We can show up, let each other, and I guess, adjourn. There's not going to be anything to put on the agenda, that's the issue.
Yeah.
We didn't realize that a few items we thought we had were actually being delayed till June, lack of ability to present them. And so once we got down, finished, there wasn't anything left, so suppose you can make something up. I mean, I...
Just learned it all about 3:30 this afternoon.
Yeah.
If no one shows up, we don't have a court, and they have a meeting anyway.
That's right.
There you go. More happy to sit here till then and stamp it done.
Okay. So as of right now, that'll be the, the, the way we'll go with the canceled study session for May. So it'll be the, the first traditional meeting in June that will be back here in the council chamber. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Kengis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Take care, everyone.